That you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of the Planning Commission in and for the Township of Addison, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of your ability.
I do.
Mark, do you also take this oath for zoning board of appeals?
I do.
Thank you. So now if everybody could sign their name here, and I will come around and pick them up. The card is for yours, it's for you to keep. Carol, we're gonna give you your oath too.
She had her hand up, she had her hand up, I was witness.
I was there.
She walked in and did this.
Never quite did that anymore, but that was.
It's obvious you signed, you're all good. Oh, thank you. The cards are for you to key.
You want to sign it?
You need to sign.
Oh, they have key?
Yes, that is you.
It's like a Monopoly, you can get out a jail free card.
Sweet.
It is a nice.
Two bucks for getting used to coffee.
It is.
Probably three fifty now, I don't know.
Just try to be nice. Little sucker's move.
How much time before we call?
Just a couple minutes. I'm not, Jennifer's excused, so I'm not expecting her. Another four minutes.
Can I ask everybody a question off the record? I guess it's more of an insight thing. I grew up in the plain states, right, so open spaces, to me, is probably a little bit different than what it is here. So what does open spaces mean to everybody? I know, I know we talk about.
Farms, to me it means farm. Until we're open, and then it's really not on the agenda, but it is a good question.
So you think it's a question worthy of official discussion? This is just me asking my neighbors their opinion.
So I would, number one, let's look to see if it's defined in the zoning ordinance, it might be, and that's where we would go. And if it's not, we could joke and say, hey, put that on the agenda, and one of the planners here, have him give you a good description of it. But since it's not on the agenda, we shouldn't talk about it, and then of course, you guys should be talking about it, because then it'll be a violation.
Yeah. Open Meetings Act.
Is Justin not here tonight?
Um, no, I think Joel's gonna address.
Yeah, I'm gonna address that.
Once the meeting's open. But you guys can talk about what's going on in your life, or.
The sports.
The farm, or.
The Tigers and the Lions.
The Lions' loss, that was horrible, so you guys can talk about that kind of stuff, you don't have to be quiet.
It was a beautiful day today.
It was.
It's been a beautiful week, the weather is like perfect working weather.
I'm gonna say remember to get your Flavor Fest tickets from the library.
Ooh.
Coming up quick.
Look, that shut down the whole. No, I have never done that.
It's pretty nice. The gardens that they do out of this, um, supporting. Yeah.
For many years I am see that.
Yes, thank you. Because you know what's been passed to me?
Oh, congratulations.
This will be our third, they did it with you, and then last year with James, and then they reached out again, they asked to file with James this year too.
I almost.
When is it?
June 22nd.
October 22nd together.
Very close not being in town.
That was close.
Yeah. Well, at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call this meeting of the Addison Township Planning Commission together in order. We are located at the Addison Township Hall on 1440 Rochester Road in Leonard. If I could have everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which you call a nation, under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all. We're not expecting Secretary Lundey to be here tonight, so I will be handling any roll calls for roll call votes. Right now, a quick roll call for present at the meeting, we have, as I said, Secretary Lundey is as an excused absence. Vice Chair Beans.
Here.
Cliff Cameron.
Here.
Derek Musgrave.
Here.
Jenny Eller.
Here.
Mark Smith.
Here.
And Chair King here. Uh, there is a single communication on the subject of short-term rentals, and it is signed, it is dated on July 20th, and it is signed by about thirty residents of Lakeville Lake, and is available in the clerk's office for review. Um, onto business, uh, the agenda, I would ask that we strike item two golf, accessory solar energy systems, as that is not quite ready for a planning commission review. Two G, yeah, sorry, accessory solar energy systems. And we will, however, as far as I'm concerned, the rest of the agenda is in order. If I could have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion.
A second.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, Secretary Lundey is excused, Vice Chair Beans. Do you, uh, this roll call vote on the approval agenda?
Yes.
Uh, Cliff Cameron.
Yes.
Derek Musgrave.
Yes.
Jenny Eller. Mark Smith. Chair King, yes. The agenda is approved as amended. Um, next item of business is the approval of July 8th, 2025, meeting minutes. Um, I reviewed them and didn't have any comments. Uh, does anybody have any items, any issues with the meeting minutes from July 8th that they would like to raise?
Pretty short and sweet, to the point, recommend motion to.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes that's presented, another second?
Support.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion passes. We're now on to, um, items, sub-items under two, the ordinance reviews. The packet itself is fairly extensive, however, we have looked at a number of these before. Also, the township attorney has looked at these, and this is where I'll bring up the point about the planner. The planner's business, CIB, has been purchased by another firm, um, whose business model encompasses larger municipalities than ours. So I bid them a fond farewell, and the township is in the process of finding a replacement firm, and I imagine that will happen relatively quickly. And I was kinda hoping that we'd have, uh, the township attorney here tonight, just in case he wanted to bring up any particular items in the ordinance reviews, uh, but we can go through these one by one and make a decision about whether we want to have them, uh, placed in the dock for a public hearing, or we want to review them again. Uh, just be aware that because of the upcoming November election, and there is an election in November for Addison Township, that there's gonna be a school board, or school bonds on the, at least two of the precincts, or at least two of the school districts that affect Addison Township, as I understand it. Uh, because of that, and the extensive preparation and necessary for executional elections, um, it's possible we wouldn't, if we even, any of these that we do say, let's go ahead and get them advertised and on the, uh, on the dock for a public, um, comment, that may not happen for a couple of months. But we can certainly make that call on them on a one-by-one basis, yes.
The lawyer has already gone over all this.
Two, A through E.
Okay. E, not F?
E, not F. And, uh, so on the first, starting with two A, uh, the pocket park, um, that we've seen a couple of times before. Uh, it got shortened up a fair amount when the township attorney went through it. Uh, I, personally, I feel it captures what we were trying to capture in the, in the park, both the types of parks, the uses of the parks, and the restrictions on the private parks. Uh, is there any discussion on that as it stands?
Since I wasn't here for that, just a quick, uh, catch me up on the private parks. Uh, my only concern is, uh, I guess, on behalf of the taxpayers, and I'm sure legal addressed this, but, uh, what's the liability of those, if someone get hurt on the township itself?
We aren't insured, right? Are you talking about the public or the private?
The privates, yeah.
I guess would be we have no liability, because it is a private apartment, it's like a private residence.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it seemed like it, those would be for, like, subdivisions and like, whole areas and stuff, so, I guess, who, since it's privately owned and operated and maintained there, but it's in public use, what kind of legal battle?
Yeah, I think so, homeowners association, and that's private use, it's not public use, it's private, it's among homeowners in the developer.
Kinda like a, you know, kinda like a no-throughfare road type thing, yeah.
And we don't own it, like, the public parks, we actually own, so we're gonna be liable, but this one we won't.
Okay.
Yep, and the, and the private parks would be essentially us, uh, willing to say that a private residence could use this for a particular purpose, and perhaps, for example, have people come in and do bird watching on a, on a body of water, um, sort of thing.
That kinda ties over into something we'll talk about later with the wetlands, so.
Yeah.
I just have a grammatical question, and I don't know the answer for sure. The very last sentence on the bottom of the page, the immediate area and the event is not, either insert the letter A there, is not a for-profit event, or insert the letter A after not, so the immediate area and the event is not a for-profit event. I don't know if it's even necessary, it sounds right or wrong, it just didn't seem to sound right to me when I read it without that.
Mark, is that in number two?
No, it's under three, it's the very last sentence at the bottom of the page.
At least a comma.
Right in there.
Special events or any first use agreements, go ahead and say it again, Mark, so I.
Okay, the immediate area and the event is not a not-for-profit event, or the immediate area and the event is not a for-profit event. I don't know which is right or wrong, either necessary or just.
Actually, I'd say not a for-profit event, personally. If you, yeah, and you are dealing with a list in that, of three items, in that, uh, in that last sentence, so you could theoretically throw in commas after the ands, especially if you're a fan of the Oxford comma after the last thing, yeah. But I agree that for clarity's sake, if you just stick the word A in there, it's not a for-profit event, it would probably be the better. Since it is a simple, uh, clarity correction, uh, people, will we, should we, anybody have a motion that we put this on the, uh, public, um, uh, on the list for, uh, public hearing?
Yes, I, it, as is, except for the last sentence with the addition of the A, not for profit. I just said the rest of this as is.
Okay, any, uh, support?
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, um, Mark Smith.
Yes.
Jenny Eller. Derek Musgrave.
Yes.
Cliff Cameron.
Yes.
Secretary Lundey is excused, Vice Chair Beans.
I think yes.
Yes, Chair King, yes. Yeah. Um, at least in my package, on two B, I had multiple copies of slightly different variants. I think the first one was sort of the final draft, in fact, it says so at the top. The second one was, uh, simply highlighted to show where changes had occurred, and then the third one was the original draft or reference to go back to. I would call your attention to the second page, item B five, if you might be curious as to why, um, that had a little attention, at least on mine, it had a little yellow mark.
Yeah.
That was because he just wanted to confirm with the, uh, the fire department, uh, that, that wasn't so far back on a single-use property of a private road that they might have difficulty, uh, in particular with like hose links, for example, and they confirmed, no, it would not be too far, so.
So that is the reason, that was one of my questions, who, who determine eight hundred feet, what was the background for it?
I don't know what the background for it, but originally it was for the concern about the hose, and they say, well, we got thousand-foot hoses.
Yes, they, they have, they have two different operations for that kind of thing.
Oakland County is now six, so we're actually a little bit longer than Oakland County, which I was surprised. But when I checked with Jerry, as Joel said.
Are there any properties in the township that would be a concern, that are that deep for private access?
I know we practiced.
I bet you could go back on some of these roads and find that easily. Um, Hosner is one of them, which is broken into segments, because it used to be a corduroy road. And if you ever go back there and look at some of those places, you can't even see the house, they're just, just a driveway wandering up the hill, and then it's gone. And furthermore, I don't know where they'd be getting water from in a lot of instances either. But again, this is, this is a rather restrictive requirement, because it's, it's in the instance where it's a single parcel of building site, and there's a, and essentially it's a driveway that's eight hundred feet long. But I wouldn't surprise me, there's a few, but then this would be a, um, restriction on future construction, not on, not trying to go back in, uh, places that are grandfathered. Any other comments or items of concern?
Item three, now I'm looking at a markup highlighted change, so we do start with. Um, at the top of page two, there's highlighted text, and it reads, "The width of a proposed private road or accessway shall not be considered part of the minimum block width requirements of the zoning ordinance." I just like know what that means, because I'm not sure I understand it.
So that's already in existence, and what it's trying to clarify is that, um, for an example, I'll use suburban farms, in order to split your property in suburban farms, you would need two hundred and sixty feet of road frontage. So typically suburban farms only requires two hundred, but this is saying that you need two hundred plus the sixty. So you need two hundred and sixty feet of road frontage so that your road can go in. Does that make sense now?
It explains this, I'm not sure it makes sense.
It does, because another person has to have two hundred feet of road frontage. So, yes, you can have two hundred feet of road frontage, if you want to divide, you need the two sixty, so I don't know what else to tell you.
Yeah.
That's, that's been in there, and that's what the board had approved ages ago, that you would need the width plus the road.
Okay, well, this is highlighted in the yellow, so it's highlighted as a change.
Um, Bob did a lot of changes with a few words, so the board authorized us to go in and change five B, because it really needed to be changed, that's what Gene really wanted us to change. But then, once we started going in here, Bob and the engineer saw that, you know, it's been a while, one of these was from nineteen seventy-two. So we were very careful not to change the intent of the ordinance, because the board authorized us to do five B only, but he did feel that some of the words needed to be corrected. So some of these areas were just more or less wordsmithing versus change. The only fully changed area is gonna be your five B, where we totally revamped it.
So does the two hundred and sixty-foot requirement apply, as you said, when somebody is splitting in suburban farms, and there will be, other than the property owner using that easily for access, that they are not using the back?
Right, and that's the other reason.
Then that makes sense. Because most suburban farm homes, if they have two hundred feet of road frontage, they just wanna put in their own driveway, they don't need two hundred and sixty feet, they just put in their own driveway.
So that's why it's width plus the road.
Um, any, any other concerns?
All right, I'll continue if that's okay.
Okay.
Four B, it says that if a private road will serve a single parcel or building site that is adequately deed restricted from urban division in a manner acceptable to the Township Land Division Committee. My question is, do we have a Township Land Division Committee?
Correct, it says the admin, would admin, would be the supervisor, treasurer, and myself.
Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes my.
Thank you very much for your careful reading of that. Uh, any other concerns? Does the board feel comfortable with pushing this one on to a public hearing?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion?
One piece of discussion, since we had a question about the fire department operations, should we invite, uh, extend an invitation to the fire department to explain that at the public hearing?
Uh, I mean, we could, but I think as long as we're ready to cite that we had done the, um, appropriate referencing, I think we'll be fine.
Who supported? Or did I not hear it, Carol?
Yeah, I believe it was, uh, Vice Chair Beans did support. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll move on to a roll call vote, again, this is a roll call vote on, uh, moving Article 419, private roads, on to a public hearing, um.
Did we move it and second it?
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
I couldn't hear, so.
Yeah, I think you were the second.
You were the second.
For this one?
Yep.
There goes the mine.
Um, Jenny Eller.
Yes.
Mark Smith.
Yes.
Cliff Cameron.
Yes.
Derek Musgrave.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beans.
Here.
Secretary Lundey is, is excused absence, and Chair King is also a yes.
It's friends.
We'll skip ahead to two C now.
There's some more things.
If I can find the right first page, here we go. Make sure I didn't skip something, okay. Um, the next several items are corrections. Um, if you will skip ahead into page four on your Article 14C1, you will see, uh, language that now makes this Article 14 compliant, what we, what we did with, um, uh, multi-use septic systems, um, in, in previous hearings, to wit, uh, not authorizing any more of them. So essentially it's saying you gotta be, uh, a lot of these requirements are gonna be restricted to, uh, zoning areas in which full urban services for sanitary sewer, water service, and such are provided. In a like manner, in C two, I got two C ones here.
Two C.
So, so, uh, Article 14C1, Commercial District Local, uh, and then we have Article C two, Commercial District General. You'll see again, uh, a few pages in on page five, a similar rewording that was recommended by the township attorney to make sure that we were in compliance with our, our previous decisions on, uh, multi-unit septic systems. Both of those, C one and C two, were the only changes to those particular articles. Um, as such, I'd like to recommend, um, that we, I want to entertain a motion to move them forward for a public hearing.
I have a question first, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I hate to be pragmatic with you, but is the word urban synonymous with public and governmental? Because what we have discussed in this board is that it must be public sanitary sewer. And I don't know if urban is synonymous. I don't know if it matters, because this is really made a complement, negative covenant, I suppose, it says if those services are not available at the urban orper.
Yeah, instead of either one of those, why not municipal services?
Yeah, I, I don't know, so that's a very good question.
But, the thing, I, yeah.
Can't be private, right, or private could be a category under urban.
You had two subcategories of urban, yeah.
You have urban sanitary sewers that could be public or could be private, and I don't know that.
I won't say that urban is private.
Could be governmental, municipal.
I was gonna say, uh. I think it's a word to explore.
The lawyer thought it was.
I don't see governmental.
There's a question in my mind, that's why I asked you.
The ordinance that we passed was, was two-pronged, it covers, um, private, and then it covers the public. So, this is, it is saying, it's giving a description what urban services are, but we can ask him if you have a word that you would like him to consider, he will, but you gotta, you gotta do some.
Well, I think for, we may have changed this, I like him to tell us it's urban the same thing as governmental, because the zoning ordinances we passed said no more private septic systems.
Correct.
So can private be a category under urban, and I don't know, that's for the lawyer to tell us.
But it does go on to say, as set forth in our. But it does go on to say as set forth in Article four. So the definition, I just pulled up, says urban services are basic public utilities, infrastructure, and then it's provided by...
The singles service, uh, sanitary system, like only one.
Water sewer.
That's the definition.
Septic system per principal property. So no, no whole systems in this area.
Okay, that's good homework because I just assumed that's what it was referring to.
Yeah.
And whatever Article four says, Article four says public, then we shouldn't use urban in one side and public in another.
Yeah, it was the same language.
Article four is where the purity most, but leaves the room for public.
I think, yeah, I think they should be as aligned with each other, but...
Article four was very much focused on simply prohibiting private multi-use systems.
We don't want another of that.
And Article twenty-four, I think, uses the word urban as well. We'll get to twenty-four in a minute.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I agree for sending this to public hearing.
Seconded.
A roll call vote. Cliff Cameron.
Yes.
Derek Musgrave.
Yes.
Jenny Eller.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beans.
Yes.
Mark Smith.
Yes.
Secretary Lundey excused, Chair King, yes. Moving on to, um, item two E, R two residential districts, and multiple corrections and, and M D corrections. Your corrections are found on pages one and four. Essentially, what this says is that you can make a residential district an R two district, but it has to meet certain requirements first. And, um, and this again is in keeping with, um, our, our previous Article four changes, section four changes, and again citing the availability of public utilities on page one. And similar, uh, reference back to Article four and paragraph ten. And in my mind, these, these like the previous ones serve perhaps primarily to refer the reader to go back and make sure they understand Article four. And are, are not going down a pathway of paying a, um, you know, developer or a designer, uh, a lot of money and not realizing there's a, a problem upfront that would have to be, uh, that may be insurmountable.
At the risk of being perceived as a bit figure, why do they use public utilities here instead of urban? Because the parenthetical definition is exactly the same.
So again, Article twenty-four, uh, section twenty-four, paragraph one B, it does list urban services. So it is intertwined, I would have to say. And then this provision that is in twelve and also, uh, two was taken right from Article twenty-four that we just passed. So I, I can see what you're saying, but it is coming from a different section than what I was just reading. So even in Article twenty-four, it's identifying the urban services as well as the public infrastructure. I can check with him if he has a preference for us to use public services instead of urban or keep as is. I have, because we can still schedule the public hearing and then you can make that change at the hearing if he says to do something differently.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary. I think my point is consistency produces ambiguity and there's probably a whole lot of changes that have to be made across a whole lot of ordinances if we were to do that. But I think just leave it alone, I just wanted to raise the point because it came up.
Well, you brought up, oh, you...
Forward.
Quite a long time ago, is this addressed in R two and the other ordinances, which it was. But then when I started looking, is it, is it defined, um, how would I say, appropriately or, or very thoroughly? So that's when you said, well, we're changing the commercials, so it matches. Let's make this very clear as well. So that's why we, we went forward and did change the R two and, and, um, the multiple so that it was very clear to the reader, which our goal is to make sure that the audience knows what the ordinance is saying. But I can ask about public versus urban.
Uh, what about, um, at the very top of the overarching ordinance and the terms and definitions? Just throw a, a definition that covers both, and that way it, it fixes them across the board.
Yeah, public and urban is the same thing in the definition. If you, if that's what you were to do, go to the definitions section.
Yeah, yeah, at the very, yeah.
Mean the same thing.
That way you, that way you don't have to change it in every single one, you can just change it in one and fixes them both or all.
Before we put that work in, I'd want to hear what the, uh, why the attorney is saying it this way. He could, there could be some very specific legal way, and it could be as simple as your other, uh, ordinances use both terms. Could be, could be as simple as that.
Yeah.
So before we decide we want to pull something back and, and start writing additional definitions into sections, let's, let's talk. Let, let, uh, the clerk talk of the attorney.
But we can send this to public hearing, or we order this, an issue, and you set it.
And again, in my mind, the most important thing is we're referencing Article four. And that's where the real bite's going to happen on, uh, someone who's not aware that we, that we did that at some point in the past. So we're at least appointing a future township resident who's investigating, doing something there with a property in the right direction.
Correct, because if they were reading the ordinances, it's not right as it stands out, it doesn't bounce them back. So I think this is good for anybody who's interested in some of their political work.
Move to that, or send it to public hearing.
Okay. Roll call vote, uh, Vice Chair Beans.
Yes.
Cliff Cameron.
Yes.
Derek Musgrave.
Yes.
Jenny Eller.
Yes.
Mark Smith.
Yes.
Secretary Lundey's excused, Chair King, yes. Uh, two E. It's my understanding that the, uh, what brought this about was again a comparison of our schedule of regulations and or, or many of our, um, items, um, and the requirements that the, were generated when we, uh, did the the change to the Article, Article four. Am I, am I, am I confused here? Clerk Fennan, is that correct?
That's pretty correct. Um, I do think the first time out, we clearly went through Article twenty-four once. Our first time out though, as you can see, R two, it didn't even have a letter next to it. So we totally missed that one. So again, this one's just correcting what we missed the first time out. And then the other two sections, since we were reviewing, we noticed, well, this is not referring to B, which sends them back to, um, number four as well. So, yeah, it's more of a correction again.
Are you talking about this?
Yeah.
I think we're on the D.
No, we...
No, we're on two E. Two E, Article twenty-four, schedule of regulations. Yeah, we, well, R two and, and M D were part of two D, and then the changes were or, the wording was identical. It's just two different, uh, um, zoning, uh, districts.
Since it's been adopted, may I still ask a question? Because I missed the Article twelve. When you do multiple dwellings?
Yeah.
Or, those locations that tie into existing sewers, should the word public be inserted between existing sewers?
I would hesitate to jerk that one around too much because we do have this one instance in the township where we got multiple, uh, residences tying into a single system that's not a public system.
I did not hear what Mark asked.
So if you look at Article twelve, M D, multiple development, we're back to D, I apologize. I missed that this was part of D. If you look at the first page.
Page one of item, the second part of two D, where we're talking about Article twelve, multiple dwelling residential district.
And we're just, uh, on, on the highlighted area, right?
Would public be inserted in, in between existing and sewer in the highlighted text?
Um, that would also go into R one if we want to do that. If it's, I mean, people are illegal, we...
I think you've given too many words. So that can just be included with that wording that's going to be redirected to the attorney? That can just be a question to the one that...
If everybody agrees that you're going to consider public, then those locations that tie into existing public sewer mains, then I will ask him if that's a good thing to put.
So the private one, Joe, is covered by a consent judgment of the courts. I don't think anything we do modifies that.
Nor do we want anything that we do to be considered to be trying to modify that.
Right.
Because there's other, there's other ones within the township that what we passed does not touch.
We can't go back.
Yeah. I mean, it does, the previous sentence does say public utilities.
And the highlighted, uh, page six actually, it's called on page seven, also speaks to public utilities.
Do you guys tell me, does it say public enough, or do we want to ask him for other, another word?
I think public is, I personally think public is sufficient, just with other sections in here.
You need to ask him to insert the word public?
The others agree, I think we are in fast motion to send it to public hearing, so we're really doing this after that.
Um, there should be plenty of time between now and whenever we can get it scheduled for a public hearing to resolve the ambiguity between, um, urban, public, uh, and how often does it belong? In my mind, it's, it's not a major issue, but it's certainly one that we can bring up to the attention of the, the guy that makes a living wordsmithing stuff, the lawyer.
Is that a motion?
Um, I don't think we need, I mean, I don't think we need a motion, we're just asking for minor clarification, uh, but in general, we're happy with, I, with how these are modified.
Chair, you had a concern about, uh, the frequency of using the word public, right? Meaning...
I mean, not really, I mean, for, uh, I'll give you an example. Article twelve, multiple dwelling, uh, residential district. If you take a look at the third to the last and the second to the last sentence, this third to the last sentence, these multiple families owning the district should provide locations regarding apartments, townhouses, duplex, triplex, quadruplex, townhouses, patio houses, and depending upon the availability of public utilities. So we're citing public local utilities. And then in the next sentence, these locations that tie in existing sewer systems, let us reconsideration for the zoning district designation. My interpretation of that is that, that second to the last sentence is, is referencing back to the public utilities in the third to the last sentence.
Yeah, the third to the last sentence, I believe, now that you pointed that out, is kind of the same consistency that we saw in the previous articles. It just wasn't highlighted, therefore, uh, it's made it look like we were, the change was the same, but it wasn't the same changes to be consistent. It's a separate change on this one compared to the previous ones.
Does the board want to reconsider setting this forward for a public hearing? I'm not, I've seen a lot of, uh, I'm not showing hands, yeah, okay. So, so other than may, you know, put this on the list of, uh, very small items to address with the township attorney, uh, when we, judging by the board's response, we are comfortable with, um, having the, both the R two and the M D correction from items two D on the, on the agenda moved forward to a public hearing as such a hearing can be scheduled. Returning to item two E, Article twenty-four, schedule of regulations. Again, that was a, perhaps the most minor of the changes, uh, that are being presented tonight. Um, and it was again just simple reference to, um, make sure we're consistent across multiple, um, items. And as, as, uh, the clerk noted, it was actually the initiating reason for you in looking at any of these.
And move it, move this forward as is?
I support.
Okay, we have a motion, we have support, any further discussion? Uh, roll call vote, Mark Smith.
Yes.
Jenny Eller. Derek Musgrave.
Yes.
Cliff Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beans.
Yes.
Secretary Lundey's excused, Chair King, yes. Um, item two F, wetlands protection. Um, there's, this is the first time, this has been presented in front of the board, it's in the shape that it's been since, I don't know.
Nineteen seventy-nine?
Yeah, it might have been nineteen seventy-nine, I don't know. It, but, um, it's quite a read. I went through it a couple of times, um, don't have to have a full throw to discussion at this point, just want to make sure it was in front of everybody. I will bring up a couple of the items, um, that I would like you to, I would ask that you think about, um, before we revisit this. Um, to wit, in paragraph three, and then later on, uh, in the, uh, in the section, references something called the Addison Township Planning Commission Wetlands Committee.
Yes.
Which apparently was a thing once, and then with turnover, uh, fell apart. And without any requests from citizenship to do something that would have, have us refer back to this, to invoke it, or have the Z V A refer to it and, and go back to it, um, there's never been a need, uh, since however long ago the, the people that were on the, on the, uh, wetlands committee, uh, departed the planning commission. Now, given that I, I am personally of the opinion, but I'm not going to ask for, um, the consensus from the planning commission tonight, but I'm personally of the opinion that we don't need a separate committee. But I'm personally of the opinion that we don't need a separate committee. Uh, this is a rarely enough invoked thing that it should probably go in front of the whole, uh, planning commission. If the planning commission has to pay your, play a role in an approval of something that where, where there might be a wetlands issue involved. But just, that's just one of the things that cropped up in my mind. Something else that's kind of related to that, you know, that there are, there are things that the state lets us do and there are things the state does not let us do when it comes to wetlands. There are some things that we, that are beyond our approval process. If you read some of the language in the current language of Section four point forty-four, there's an implication that we are giving an approval also before it goes to the state. And I would much rather, just from the way I, I tend to operate, make sure that we review it before it goes to the state. So we don't get embarrassed by something that the state's always going to say that's, this is wrong. Or we may want to ma- highlight a couple of items of particular, uh, wetlands protection issue to make sure that the state doesn't miss them when the project goes forward to them. Um, but I'm not, I don't, I think, I don't want to be in a position where I'm, the planning commission is refusing to get permission and it goes to state looking like we're dragging our, we're trying to, um, make decisions for them or in replacing them. Just a thought, again, not something that we need to resolve tonight. Just when you're reading through this, just something to bear in mind, how we want to run some of that language. And there was another one on land division. Oh, God. I'd never go back and figure that out.
What's the difference between this wetlands committee and the group that takes care of the, they cut back the swamp?
Oh, the species? Yeah.
Yeah, what, what's the?
Well, the wetlands committee would be a subset of the membership of the Addison Township Planning Commission.
Internal versus external.
Yeah. And you're buying yourself a, you know, you would not be a quorum, but you are buying yourself a whole nother meeting. And then you had to come back and report back to the planning commission and the planning commission's got to discuss it and, and, uh, certainly if it was a situation where this was happening all the time, well, it might make sense to have a, a separate, uh, committee. It might.
The septic fields and the lakes and.
Well, that's what I'm saying. On page three, uh, Alpha three, that kind of like makes sixty percent of the residents in this township owner of a wetland. And if you start telling them how to live their life, they're going to be like, uh, we need to change to the rules.
Which if it's regulated by the state, let them regulate it and stay out of it and.
We just administer it.
Administer it, yeah.
That, that was going to be my question is, uh, whatever is above and beyond the state, can we just simplify this whole thing down to adopt by reference like most other, like, agencies do? Then expound where we want to expound, which should be very minimal.
Currently, we regulate below five acres. So the state eagle regulates five acres.
Yeah.
Can be continuous. The township also regulates anything between two to five. So we probably couldn't really just reference it, but I think what legal wants to do is go through this and update it and make sure that we're in compliance with all the rules and rights for wetlands. Um, and then of course, Joe's point, so very, very important for you guys to decide, I mean, what do you want to do?
And, and we won't do that tonight and to sort of, uh, emphasize what Pauline said and something that, uh, Vice Chair Beans had asked about the very beginning. The lawyer's gone through A through E, but he's not gone through F yet. So other than using this as an opportunity to introduce it to the members of the, of the planning commission, um, and a couple of thoughts on my part, that was the only reason that I, I kept it on the agenda.
Do we have a copy of the map? It also references in here that we have a map, which I looked on the website and only saw a couple of maps.
Something else that we need to address. Um, so it does say that we have a designated wetlands map, which we do in the township. It is ancient.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to change that as well to probably refer to something along the lines of an eagle, um.
Yeah, it's online readily available.
Correct. And, and, and then just some kind of name, like we do in other ordinances, the latest map of, of, and then labeled eagle map or whatever. And so that we don't have to go in all the time and amend it. They'll just refer to the latest one and of the states.
But the only concern about that would be, uh, since they only regulate five acres or more, we're doing more. We would have a much bigger map than what the state would have, wouldn't we? Or no?
Um, typically, and I would have to double check that one too, but the state wetlands map that we have now, let's see, print out. It actually shows all the wetlands in Addison Township and then it reflects which ones are state regulated so that we know. It is a really good basis map for us to determine as well, but it's ancient. I, it is ancient. So the ones online probably should be similar where they're going to reflect those that are regulated and those that aren't. Um, I will have to check into that though.
And if you know off the top of your head, you don't have to put too much brain cells in it. What's the background on why we're doing two to five acres above the state?
I think this is going back a long time too. Uh, because the township does have so many wetlands and we do not have the infrastructure. It's important that we are envi- environmentally concerned. So we want to make sure that the development that happens is not going to contaminate. So.
The watershed stuff, right?
Yes. So the township stepped in to say we want to regulate the smaller ones, which the law allows us to do.
Yeah. Okay, I'd just say as long as it's for that, protecting the, the drinkable water, um, because the, the way this is written, it seemed to be more about wildlife, recs, parks and stuff like that, recreation.
Part of it too.
Yeah.
But he'll re, he'll redo all of this, but he does want, he's going to need some of that input on as far as do you want a committee or just as Joe said, put it to the planning commission. Um, so some of those items, he will need some direction.
What's the goal? To identify?
The, the goal is to update this as part of a, uh, a larger process of stepping through all of our zoning stuff to make sure that's, it's current. Current and consistent with what we want.
So, um, if it's appropriate, I'd make a motion, uh, for that specific thing. Uh, just leave it, uh, recommend the lawyer, leave it open enough to where, uh, we, we can not have a standing committee, but can call a committee as needed to where, like you said, if the frequency is small, we can just downsize it just to us here the week, uh, the month before we have something. But if it gets to be something big, more frequent, then we can create a standing committee.
How about just turning the responsibility over to the planning committee completely and avoiding any other agents?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I can see a situation where we might assign two people to investigate a particular issue, some detail. I don't think it's necessary to, since it's not, since it's, it's not a quorum producing issue. It doesn't, uh, run afoul of the Open Meetings Act. So having two or three people report back on an investigation to the whole planning commission is fine. It's, it's the, it's more the divi- the, um, decision-making responsibility, the way it's currently written. The decision-making responsibility that in some sections are placed on the committee, not on the planning commission. And, um, the, the fact that, for example, our bylaws don't have a, a wetlands planning committee on them. I would rather avoid increasing the organizational infrastructure by establishing a wetlands planning committee and having to go back to the bylaws and make sure it's in there too. I would much rather handle things on the fly. And if it does get busy enough where we want to have a couple of people and, you know, you two go investigate this wetland issue and you two go investigate that wetland issue, we can do that without having to have it down here in that manner, as long as we leave the formal decision-making process to the whole planning commission. But that, that's my thought on it. I'm sure we're going to get a, um, an intelligent and well-reasoned, um, uh, rewrite out of this by the township attorney. And we can, just something to bear in mind when we, we get to see that for the first time. No action on this one is required, as I said. Uh, there's, if, if we could, uh, there's no other urgent discussion items on it, I'd recommend that we, we'd move on to, to Item three since, uh, Item two G was eliminated upon amendment of the, uh, agenda. And it's, it's simply there to, uh, note that we are now compliant with the bylaws by having, uh, planning commission representation on the township board and the person of Jenny Eller. My reason I bring that up is because the last time we discussed it, uh, we did, we were not in compliance with the bylaws, but now we are. And of course, welcome to Cliff Cameron as a member on the board. It is now, uh, six fifty-six P M. I would like to go ahead and open the floor for public forum. This is the opportunity for the, anyone in the public to, uh, a- address the planning commission. We are here to listen, not to dialogue. I never know.
Can I step out there and ask?
Yeah.
Actually, literally, can we do that?
Uh, normally they're in commissioner's reports. A great opportunity to have any additional discussion that has to happen. Uh, it's six fifty-seven. I'll go ahead and close the, uh, the public forum. Move on to the next item, which is commissioners' reports. Anything out of the, is the zoning board at a, at a meeting? Okay. And any, anything of any great worth coming out of the township board?
Always a great word.
Does anybody else have any, um, uh, reports, uh, that they want to bring up in front of the planning commission while we're still in, uh, formal session? Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
I support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Uh, six fifty-eight.